Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Governor Code, Chapter 551. We need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Robert, all four. That is three, six. Let the record show that Josh Jordan is not present tonight. That's six oh on the agenda. And also on the agenda here, we've got our FFA officers. They're going to skip out on us tonight, or we've asked them to wait until next month because of road conditions just to be safe. So if they're not doing their prayer, I'm going to do the prayer tonight. So pray with me. God, we pray for all the good things that you've done for Mount Vernon ISD, and we thank you, Lord, for the blessings, especially those that we're going to be able to pour out tonight. And we pray, Lord, for those that are traveling from our school and other schools, that we, you would just watch over those that are on the road after dark. Anytime, Lord, just watch over us. Give us a good four-day weekend, Lord, and bless us in what we do. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. We'll do our prayer, our pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible. All right, after the call at this time, we'll move on to our special recognition.
Good, all right. Well, it's my honor to recognize our Teachers of the Month and Auxiliary. I will, Auxiliary Person of the Month is not here, but I will, we'll do her first real quick and just honor her. The Auxiliary Person of the Month was Ashlyn Hodges. It says, Ashlyn is so patient and loving with her students. She's willing to do whatever it takes to make sure they're getting the most out of PE. I've seen Ashlyn run with her students on the track, which means multiple times a day, throw, roll, underhand toss balls with them, calm them down when they're having a meltdown. She is so patient and kind. They could be kicking or hitting her, and she just talks to them softly, tells them that that is not okay. She can always calm them down and direct them, redirect them to what is needed. She deserves so much more than just an award. So our Auxiliary Employee of the Month is Ms. Ashlyn Hodges. We'll make sure that she gets, gets her plaque or her file. Anyway, so let's give Ms. Ashlyn a hug. All right, so we'll move right into Elementary Teacher of the Month. If we could have Ms. Lindsay Gable come forward, please. All right, it says, Ms. Gable is an invaluable asset to Mount Vernon Elementary School. As the team leader of the fourth grade ELR Social Studies team, she encourages her team to collaboratively, or collaboratively think outside the box to find new ways to meet their students' needs. Ms. Gable helps her students set challenging individual progress goals and creates ways to celebrate their successes. Ms. Gable is encouraging to her team members and her students. She is always willing to help others and puts others ahead of herself. We are very blessed to have Ms. Gable as part of the Mount Vernon Elementary family. Congratulations. We'll get a picture. Very good. Want to say anything?
Thank you. I work with the best students and parents and coworkers ever, so I'm very blessed.
Very good. Congratulations. Next is not just the Middle School Teacher of the Month, but we have just heard she is the teacher, the best teacher ever. That's right. That's what Mr. Watson said. If I could have Ms. Lockaby to come forward, please. Ms. Glenda Lockaby plays a vital role in the success of all of our special needs students here at Middle School. Her work is appreciated beyond measure. I would challenge anyone to walk just one day in her shoes and face the challenges that she takes on each day to help grow her students. Ms. Lockaby always has a positive attitude while working with her life skills students and is willing to help in any way that she can. She has a big heart. Her patience and love for her students is second to none. We are very grateful for the contributions of Ms. Lockaby, and we are blessed that she is a part of our team here at Mount Vernon Middle School. So, Middle School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Glenda Lockaby. Now, you've worked for Mount Vernon for...
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years. Have you ever missed a day of work? And has not missed one day of work in fourteen years. Or a bus route, because yes, she also drove the bus route. So she could never retire and will be with us forever. Ms. Glenda, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Let's get a picture. Very good. Want to say anything?
I just, I just want the kids to be better tomorrow than they are today.
Very good.
She's a great cook.
A great cook too? I like it.
Her carcase weighs twenty-five pounds.
Wow, very good.
But pecan praline is not bad.
All right, if I could have Ms. Marie Sanders come forward for our High School Teacher of the Month. Says, without a doubt, Ms. Sanders is one of the most reliable staff members at Mount Vernon High School. She teaches physics, engineering, and environmental science, and is always prepared and takes seriously her responsibility to deliver quality, aligned instruction to her students. There isn't any wasted time in Ms. Sanders' classroom, and even with her no-nonsense approach, Ms. Sanders is a favorite among students because she demonstrates a genuine desire to help them be successful, both in and out of the classroom. She is always seeking new ideas and is willing to listen, learn, and collaborate with her colleagues. Ms. Sanders has incredible knowledge in a variety of fields and has a unique way of reaching struggling students and making complicated material accessible to them. Students who may not even be in her class can often be found seeking her out for extra help in a variety of areas. Ms. Sanders will always make time for her students and is willing to come early and stay late to tutor or provide support. Ms. Sanders is a vital part of the team at the Mount Vernon High School, and she is very worthy to be named Teacher of the Month. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I would. I stand six feet away. Because I took my mask off. It is a privilege to work for this district, where everyone from the school board through the superintendent, the principals, all the way down, is always putting the children first. This is something that doesn't happen in every school district, and I plan to be here as long as you'll put up with me. And I'll work up until noon on the day I die so that you only have to pay the sub half a day.
We're going to come behind here.
I also want to thank Mrs. Sumro for getting me the COVID vaccine. She got me on the list.
All right, let's get a picture.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm turning it the wrong way. Well, if I get enough of these, I can retile the bathroom.
Congratulations, lady. Thank y'all so much.
And we'll be through with our action items pretty quick, so y'all watch this for a few minutes and then we'll be out of here. All right, so Max, no more, no open forum? Okay, so we'll move on to item five, Consider Approval of Consent Agenda. Any questions on our consent agenda for Dr. McCullough? If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Robert, seconded by Linda, all four. That is six oh. Move on to our action items. The first one is Consider Approval of TASBY Policy Update 116. We can read all through these, but we've got them in our board book. Are there any questions on any of those updates from TASBY?
Really, all of them are just wording changes, mark-throughs, and some additional language. Really nothing, really not a change to the policy at all, really. The gist of the policy, anyway.
So if there's no further questions on that, I make a motion that we approve the TASBY Policy Update 116 affecting these, the local policies. Seconded by Linda. I'm going to read them off here. CQB local, BCD local, DCE local, FFAC local, GKA local. All four. Six oh. All right, move on to item B here. Let's reevaluate the requirement of wearing masks by staff and students.
Okay, remember back in September, I believe it was, yes, back in September, the board approved a mandate for all of our students and staff to wear masks except for elementary students. Since that time, we have, we've worked through that. We have, I will admit, and I will say it falls on me as superintendent, we have, we've become somewhat lax in regard to that. But in saying that, I believe what we've seen on our campuses also goes along with the feeling of our community as well and in our school as a reflection of our community. But since that time, we had, you know, our cases were a little higher in October and early November, but since November, or since the middle of November, right before Thanksgiving, our COVID, positive COVID numbers have been very low, averaging in the neighborhood of about two a week. We had two last week, that's, and then we have two this week, and I think are the same students, high school. They're not related. The case did not seem to be related at all. Was not shared at school between the two. It does not seem. So with that, I'm going to make a recommendation that, that we, that we remove the mandate for wearing masks. I think what we're already doing is anyway, is that we encourage it for those teachers and students who, and families who want to continue to wear masks, we are going to encourage that. I will say that I've shared with our leadership team as well, even if you approve this tonight, that if they have a teacher and they walk into that teacher's classroom and that teacher's wearing a mask, that they put their mask on as a, as a principal, as a leader on their campus as well, out of respect for that teacher and what that teacher's doing. So, like I said, it really, really what we're doing, I think, is, is really just backing back off the mandate and really putting, I guess, putting our policy back where our practice is currently as well. So I'm going to make the recommendation that we remove the, wearing the mask by staff and students with the, with the understanding that if our numbers, if something changes and we begin to see an increase in numbers again, then we will immediately start back to the mandate that we've had requiring students and teachers as well to wear.
So we won't have to call another board meeting?
Yeah.
We can just, we can say we got to go and go.
I will say today, I looked Franklin County on the CDC website today. I think it was showing thirty-six positive cases. You know, assuming county-wide, it's still not, I mean, still not very many.
Further questions?
I would, I mean, I emailed you and I don't know, I just, if we don't, I'm for not requiring them. That's people's choice to me, but the leave policy is what bothers me. If we're not going to require the students to wear them, and we have an employee who is exposed and required by the district to quarantine, and they already took their leave in the fall because of exposure or because they actually had it, whatever, I have a problem with us making them quarantine and not taking care of them.
Well, and thank you for sharing that. You know, and the part about the quarantine is not the district making them. I mean, that's, that's a part of what, what we're, what we're requiring. I'll do you, I'm just, but that's part of that, you know, and with, with the leave, with the extra COVID leave, or however you want to word that, how was that?
Precautionary leave.
Precautionary leave is what we called it, for those who did not have to use it during the first semester. You know, that, that's what that's for. I mean, every, every person still has leave available, whether it be the four days local leave we already give them or the five days state leave that they have, and any additional leave that they have accrued over, over the years. You know, so again, when it comes, which I understand what you're saying. I just, I don't know unless the board wants to put that back on the agenda for next month and change that leave is done. I mean, which is something we can do.
Right, that's why I said I'd like to, if we're going to not require the masks, I would like to revisit the leave policy. Because we need to take care of our employees, and if they're exposed on campus or in the course of their job duties with this district, I think we should take care of them, period. So that's just mine. I mean, if we're requiring the masks, that's one thing, I mean, they get, I mean, if they're not wearing their masks, we're not doing what they're supposed to do, and they get it, that's one situation. But if we say nobody has to wear a mask and Little Johnny comes to school tomorrow and exposes Ms. Gable, and Ms. Gable has to be home for fourteen days or ten days, however, I mean, I can't remember now what the requirement is, but, and she already had to take the time off in the fall, so now she has to take her personal days because we're no longer requiring them to wear. That's going to know that won't happen because she's elementary and they don't make them wear the mask anyway, but she's already in the [inaudible].
What if Ms. Gable was wearing her mask? She's known for wearing it. She always has it on. Is she going to get quarantined if she has a positive student?
If Johnny, she's close contact exposure.
There's more, there's quite a bit that goes in there, but I can say, you know, as we contact trace that, I want to say, we're still going to try to take care of our folks and honor those who are, if they're wearing a mask, the best that we can.
Further questions?
Is that something we can put on the agenda for next time to revisit that?
I make a motion that Mount Vernon ISD no longer requires staff and students to wear masks. Do I have a second? Seconded by Leanne Ramsey, all four. Three, six, oh. Next item of business is D, Consider Approval of Board Resolution, no, excuse me. C, Consider Approval of a One-Time COVID Compensation Payment for District Employees. Dr. McCullough, you want to explain this?
I will. What we have, what we have taken a look at doing is, you know, trying to, again, honor our staff, all of our staff, not just teachers, but every, every staff member we have in the district for everything that they've had to do and the extra work and time and effort they've had to put in. We're technically staying for this school year, but really even before that, with everything that's gone on with COVID, our teachers and custodians and cafeteria workers and administrators have, have stepped up and gone over, above, and beyond everything that we could have asked them to do to continue to make sure that our kids have school and that we're able to be here and educate face-to-face, which I think is amazing when, you know, we, we started early, they showed up and they were here. We've continued to go. We've been here, even through quarantines and everything else. We've had folks show up and continue to have class and make it where our kids can have education. And so because of that, we have, you know, we've talked through this a little bit as a team of eight a couple of times, and so I'd like to make a recommendation that, that we honor our employees in their March paycheck with a one-time $500 COVID compensation for each one of them in the March payroll.
Any questions on that? So would anybody like to make a motion that we approve a one-time COVID compensation payment for district employees as presented? $500. Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Robert. Is this full-time employees?
Be everybody.
Everybody, okay. All four. Six oh.
Thank you. Congratulations, staff. Kind of like wanted you to hang around so you'd hear that from, from, from what they did. So thank you for what you do.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do for all of our kids, very much so.
All right, last, no, second to the last item here. Consider Approval of Board Resolution Extended Bank Depository Contract for Funds with Alliance Bank.
You know, we're, we're required to bring before you a depository contract. We're in a time that we can just, we can extend that. We don't have to go back out for bids this year for that. Alliance Bank was willing to continue to do so, and we are as well. One change in that only, that we both agree upon, is allowing them to move the rate calculation. Currently, with Franklin, when it was Franklin County, they had to set it for the third Monday. Alliance does theirs on the first Monday. So they just asked if we could line up with all the rest of the depositories they have, and we're okay with that.
Any further questions about this resolution? Okay, I make a motion that we, the board, approve the Board Resolution Extended Bank Depository Contract for Funds with Alliance Bank as presented. Do I have a second? Seconded by Scott, all four. Six oh. Last item, Consider Approval of Revised 2020/2021 Stipend Exper duty Compensation List.
This is just making an addition to the stipend list for certified employees such as, I'm going to say, usually it's going to be a coach or maybe a Mr. Ingram, FFA teacher, who have their bus driver's license and can drive for us. We are still currently two, two drivers short for route drivers, so Eddie and Bobby both are having to drive. And so when somebody's sick or out or can't be there, we're, we're trying to hustle to find somebody as well as, now that we have, you know, springtime sports is just crazy busy. And so we don't have, not all of our coaches are certified to be able to drive a bus, so at times we have to pull somebody off a route to drive them and then we have to pick up, you know, even Mr. Ingram has stepped in a couple of times to help drive a route. So what this does is, we did not have it in our, in our extra duty stipend list to pay them, so this, this basically shows and makes it where it's in there for that. So they will get paid for driving that route. Does that sound great?
Yeah, because they're not at will. We didn't, we just wanted to make sure being fairly consistent for professional staff to have an extra duty set already for them so that we can compensate them for [inaudible].
Further questions on that?
Or does anybody want to get their license and drive a bus?
I can't even raise the number, but I know there's none.
We're board, we're board members, so we can't just have payments.
Bobby can still let you drive, I bet.
Do I have a motion to approve the Revised 2020/2021 Stipend Exper Pay Compensation List as presented? Motion is made by Robert, seconded by Linda, all four. That's six oh. So Drew, y'all, if y'all want to hear, we're fixing to do some information items, budget update information, which is going to be extremely exciting. And some training opportunities for us. If y'all want to stay and hear that, it's going to take ten or eight minutes. We're going to kind of roll as quick as we can. But if y'all need to get on and get on to the house and watch.
It's getting cold.
We'll watch it. Ms. Sanders, thank you for what you do. Ms. Lockaby, all y'all, Gable, appreciate it. Drew, you're here to support them, so. Thank y'all. I see Ms. Lockaby going by, crossing those white oak bridges down there. You cross the white oak bridges, I guess, how many times a day?
When I take a double ride inside my bus, looking for another one.
Yep.
But they're good. They're good. Thank you so much.
All right, so this budget update here.
All right, so this is an update of where we are in regard to our finances so far this year. The first one's on page forty-four of the board book, I believe. We had an estimated revenue in our budget of a little over, well, about fifteen point seven million dollars. Currently, we have realized twelve point six million of that, so we still have a little over three point one million outstanding. So we're about eighty percent of our revenue budget that we have collected. You have on page forty, starting on page forty-five, kind of a breakdown in regard to our expenses in each function. But overall, of our expenditures in our Fund 199, we had estimated expenditures of fifteen million four ninety-six, and we are, we still have, we've only spent six point three. So we're only about forty percent of our estimated expenditures for the school year, so we're about where we need to be. In regard to food service, we had an estimated revenue of six hundred and sixty-four thousand. We've only collected two forty-four, two hundred and forty-four thousand of that. Part of that is, is our numbers are down somewhat in regard to participation, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Our expenditures, though, are still in line with where they need to be at about two forty-nine, so about thirty-seven percent of our estimated expenditures is where we are so far this year. In regard to debt service, our debt service estimated revenue was two point seven million. We have collected two point three. That was at the end of January, and so we probably had a little bit more coming since then. Had an expenditure debt payment of two point four million. It's been in January. That shows that not been paid, but I think we have just recently faded this week, so it would be more up to date than what we have in your, in your book. But that's where we are in regard to, to finances. We're, I think we're set where we, pretty good shape where we need to be. Ms. Pam Crawford does a phenomenal job of, of taking care of our expenses for sure and making sure we're, where we need to be. Any questions on that? Okay, rolling totals, still just right about where we've been. Book shows fourteen seventy-one. I think that's, we might even be fourteen seventy. Or just, for whatever reason, that's, that's where we are. Attendance-wise, our attendance rate is, is still not where we want it to be. Our juniors and seniors, those two classes seem to be where we're struggling a little bit right now of getting them here. So that's where our higher absenteeism is. All of the, other grades, except maybe pre-K a little bit, seems to be hanging in right around ninety-four, ninety-five percent. We'd love for it to be better than that, but I guess we'd blame it on COVID. We're blaming everything else on COVID, so might as well. Training opportunities, put those there for you. As you know, we've, we've talked about our Team of Eight training as well as that evaluating and improving student outcomes. Service Center is going to do that on April the eighth at the Service Center. It's going to be included. We went ahead because they're only allowing, because of social distancing, they're only allowing twelve districts, our twelve teams, thanks to be there. But I've had Ms. Laurie already sign us all up, and so we have that on our, on our schedule to be able to be there. Other opportunities for training and accord, now this is, this is on the book right now, but does not mean it's going to stay there because we don't know what's going to happen. But we do have Summer Leadership Institute, SLI, with TASBY in Fort Worth, which will be June twenty-third through twenty-sixth. Aaron had already sent that later out to y'all and tried to get it on your calendar if that's something you want to do. If, if SLI in Fort Worth is canceled or it goes virtual, one is not taking place, I'm also putting your book, I've shared with you a couple of times, we are a member of TREA, Texas Rural Education Association. This year, they have moved their, their conference, which is usually the same date, and it's usually north Fort Worth as well, but they've actually moved it this year to Rockwall? Round Rock, sorry, Round Rock, thank you. Round Rock to the Kalahari Resort and Convention Center. And it's the following weekend. It's Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, June twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. And so that would be another option for us if SLI is canceled this year. So then, again, you'd be able to get the same amount of training, it's just at a different place, so just wanted you to be aware of those dates.
Okay, that's why we got several opportunities.
That's right.
And, you know, we're going to be fortunate if we can even do anything, but sure about easy to do that. We'll look at this other two and talk about it. What about the eighth of April? Is everybody available for that, you think, so we can do our Team of Eight?
I should be. I've been tossing for a while.
We'll shoot for that. We can knock our Team of Eight training out.
I'm saying, and if not, I mean, if something comes up that you can't, for the, for us all, I mean, for you to get both credits, the ISO training credit, three hours training credit, and the Team of Eight, we all have to be there to receive both. I mean, so if not, they, they are offering a virtual one. I don't know what date that is. But we, you know, if we had to go virtual and do it that way, we could. But you love it so much you do to get it personally.
I would do it for y'all. And I plan on the eighth being back.
Baby's going to be here for the eighth, right? Yes, for sure.
And we'll, we'll work it out. If it don't work out, we'll do something else.
Y'all just got to talk to my husband.
Call in reinforcements for you.
Yeah, go ahead and tell him to take off on the eighth.
Mark it.
Yeah, he's got something going on. I'll tell him. All right, well, that's that, so. Any other questions on any of those training opportunities? So if not, the board will have to convene in a closed meeting to discuss personnel matters as posted on the agenda and allow the Texas Government Code 551074, which is five forty-six.
Thank y'all.
Okay, so the board ends this closed session at six fifty-one PM. Dr. McCullough, do you have any professional contracts to bring to us?
I'd like to make the recommendation to extend the Chapter 21 administrative contracts for additional year for Chandra White, Jennifer Sumro, Craig Watson, Jason Glover, Michael Hammond, James Payne, Derek Tyson, Rhonda Orin, Shane Thedford, Brad Floyd, Shelley Brown, and to extend another year, non-Chapter 21 contracts, to Pam Van Dever and Anthony Ilers.
Okay. Do you need to vote on that, right?
Yes, please.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve those professional administrators and director contracts as recommended by the superintendent?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Scott. Seconded by Leanne, all four. Six oh.
Thank you. We have no resignations this morning.
Okay, so nothing on the personnel report. So if there is no further business at this time, I declare this meeting adjourned at six fifty-two.
Very good. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.